Okay, I call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Adoption of agenda, any additions or changes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. Counselor Meister, question?
Move by Counselor Meister that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Adoption of minutes from September 9th, 2024. Any questions, concerns?
No, all adopt.
Move by Counselor Carlson that the regular meeting minutes of September 9th, 2024, be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Delegations.
We have Sergeant Perry here with the RCMP with a quarterly report.
Give your worship to Stewards Counselors, yes, Abe. I'll get ready to it, I'm not just sure how busy your agenda is this evening. For the first quarter report for this fiscal year's annual performance plan, covering the dates from April 1st through June 30th, 2024. For the traffic initiative, we saw 23 speeding-related offenses being reported, 13 of which resulted in charges being laid, which also included two speeding charges in a school zone. Now, I know the members have actually done some verbal warnings and written warnings don't count on this either, so just letting you know on that. Those numbers are expected to increase during this quarter, the second quarter coming up. Property crimes. We had two compliance checks, or crime reduction, rather, we had two compliance checks conducted, both on a high-risk offender who's well-known to police, and both checks were deemed compliant. We go after the higher-profile people that we have on conditions to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and so far, we haven't had to breach anybody. The only breaches that we're getting are people failing to report to the probation officer, which of course, we won't be know about until probation lets us know. Police community relations, police visibility this quarter, we've seen 15 foot patrols being conducted within various areas and venues within Claresthome and Staveley, of course. It has visibility shifts and patrols have also been undertaken, in which all members have been part of, including myself. These areas include Claresthome, Staveley, and the surrounding MD of Willa Creek, which I'm responsible for. So I do have the guys and myself getting out and showing the colors if I can say whatever we, whenever we can. I'll get into membership here after I've completed this. For substance abuse or the drug initiative, we saw three Controlled Drugs and Substances Act-related files. One resulted in a no-case seizure, which means we just seized a small amount of, in this case, methamphetamine, and federal crown will not prosecute simple possession anymore anyway. That's across Canada. So anybody with a simple possession, I'm not talking quantities, because then you could be looking at trafficking, but just for simple possession of, you know, besides marijuana, but all these other hardcore drugs, there's no charges going forward in any of those, according to federal prosecutors. I mean, in my opinion, it's enabling, but anyways, that's a different topic. Two other files related in Crime Stoppers tips, which we aren't able to verify. We can't just act on that tip alone, we have to corroborate the information within that tip in order for us to advance the investigation, if you know what I mean. So it's not like you can't just call and say, yeah, Dale's got drugs at home. Well, okay, fine, we don't know for sure, we're not going to kick his door in, based on that. We can't. We need to corroborate the information that we receive. Makes sense? And we only had one tip per, on two different people, so it's not like we're getting a whole bunch of tips on one individual, so. I'll get into the manpower issue. During this first quarter, too, we had guys away on mandatory training for firearms qualifications and that sort of thing. Member had to go up to Edmonton for first-day training. This is mandatory stuff that has to get done, and we had members on holidays and leave as well, at that time. There's still five of us that are active, one's coming back end of the month. Actually, put a leave request in for that weekend, he's supposed to be back, so he'll be back October 1st, the member that was on mat leave. And my cadet, who I tried to cut loose early in his training, but Ottawa said absolutely not, so he had to be paired up with another member at all times. So when Constable Woods transferred at the beginning of July, I could not fill his spot with the cadet, so I had to wait until October 12th, when he's fully trained up and signed off. Then I can start putting him into another position to help with the coverage aspect, because right now, he's got to be paired up with another member. My acting corporal, he's still waiting for his promotion by exception, that's Constable Jackson, so basically, he's sitting in two spots, his constable spot and the corporal spot. Whenever that gets completed, he'll vacate the constable spot, at which time staffing will then action that constable spot for another member, once he gets into the corporal spot full-time, because right now, he's got his foot in both. As far as the new detachment goes, I haven't heard nothing. I remember years, a while ago, they talked about breaking ground this spring, but that never, never took place, obviously. I don't know if there's an issue with the town, or an issue with the location or servicing, I'm not exactly sure. Perhaps the town can, or the council can shed more light on that for me, because my property management people haven't been keeping in touch with me at all. I'm not griping, I'm just saying. Any question arising from my report? Or did I miss anything? Also, during that time period, from April 1st to June 30th, Claresthome detachment, we had 706 files or complaints made to the office. 54 deemed unfounded, actual 652 files within that three months. Wow. And each one, you know, one file could last, could be dealt with over the phone, another one could take five, six hours to deal with, so.
Is that up, or normal, or no real sense?
It's probably within, say, within last year, give or take a little bit. I never brought last year's comparison, I apologize, I should have, and then I can fill you in. I can still let you know, say, through Abe, what the percentage difference is from this time last year to this report today. I'm happy to say the break-ins that we had at the beginning of June stopped as abruptly as they started, and we have two people currently charged and waiting for the court process.
Counselor Kettles?
I just wanted to get on record appreciating the traffic enforcement a little bit, I know it's tough with the, oh, mics.
I just want to commend the traffic enforcement a little bit, I know it's difficult with lower numbers, and appreciate the diligence for the school zones as well, it is the season kind of thing, as school starts up, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I did put a little burp in the paper, it hasn't come out yet, just about that very thing, about the school zones, as well as cross-watches and seatbelts, which I think are kind of a reoccurring problem in town that I'm seeing anyways, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks. Take care.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, take care.
Hey, yeah, we have Peter Casarala here, who is with Southgrove, which is one of the regional economic development associations that the town of Claresthome belongs to. He's the executive, Peter, sorry, just remind me of your actual title, he's the senior executive.
Executive Director with the Southgrove Regional Initiative.
Thanks, Peter. And he's joining us, joining council via Zoom tonight.
Thank you very much for having me, Mr. Mayor. How much time do you want me to take tonight?
15 minutes.
You got it. Okay, so first of all, I just want to apologize for not being there in person, it was my intent and my plan, but parenting and childcare had other intentions. So, yeah, without further ado, thank you for accommodating me. So, yeah, my name's Peter Casarala, I'm the Executive Director of the Southgrove Regional Initiative. I work for you and 29 other municipalities across Southern Alberta, and 13 associate members, who all partner together to advance regional priorities together. These are projects, of course, that all of our municipalities and our associate members have in common, and we would like to see advanced, but none of you have the mandate yourselves to advance them. And so we partner together, together with the provincial government and other funders in order to advance them. This presentation to council is part of my mandate from the board. I am supposed to get in front of 40% of our members every year, to directly report on what we're working on, how we're using the taxpayer funds that are entrusted to us, and to talk about, you know, some of the challenges we're facing or opportunities that exist out there in the world. So I'll skip through some of the boilerplate that's in your slideshow that hopefully has been sent out to you. I want to go down to slide four there, just to talk briefly about some of the projects over the last 20 years that are informing investments, to give you a sense, if you're not very familiar with our work, of the kind of stuff that we do. So when you look at some of the projects that are on the board there, like the Terograph Technology Trial, so a number of years ago, broadband was the big going concern, and folks in the business community really couldn't get traction going, because they couldn't get the proper broadband speeds in order to do business and compete with the folks up in the cities. And so Southgrove was really heavily involved in trying to find solutions. So an example of a project that we did was, we partnered with the Milk River Cable Club out of Milk River, Alberta, which is a nonprofit association, in order to be a technology trial pilot for a company out of Israel that had a technology called Terograph. It's high-speed, high-capacity radios that promised to be able to deliver fiber-like speeds in small urban environments for about a tenth the price of deploying fiber optics. And the trial was successful. So Southgrove put together the funding package, the people with the nonprofit, they trialed the technology, and we went back and forth with the company out of Israel in order to make sure that it was successful. And then we started sharing the information we found. And that was a number of years ago, and today, there's over 30 Canadian companies who are deploying this technology in small rural environments across Canada. And a lot of that technology has been deployed right next door to you guys up in Volcan County, and in other areas across rural Southern Alberta as well. Another good example of a current project is our global agri-food marketing. So the role we play in bringing investment to Southern Alberta, other than picking up the phones and calling folks like Abe and saying, hey, can you accommodate this investment, is that we market Southern Alberta to the world. We're the only ones doing this. We are specifically pushing agri-food marketing on the advantages of Southern Alberta as a place to do business in agri-food in Europe and in North America, and next year, we're expanding our efforts into Southeast Asia. And that's been extremely successful, and an award-winning initiative that's in its fourth year now. On the next page there, this fifth slide, you've got our 2024 to 2025, this is our current operational plan. This is what we're working on right now, and obviously, in 15 minutes, I'm not going to go through everything we're working on, but I'll just highlight a few things. So the Southern Alberta Alternative Energy Partnership, Southgrove's the lead partner in a collaboration of economic development organizations that span Southern Alberta. It's Alberta Southwest that you're members of as well, Southgrove and the Palisir Economic Nomic Partnership, and Economic Development Lethbridge. And we've worked together since 2007, in order to profile Southern Alberta as an excellent location for new investments in renewable energy, and it's arguably been the most successful thing we've ever done, because there have been billions of dollars' worth of investment dumped in. Now, having said that, we spent the last three years, working with Minister Newdorff and with others, to basically try to get in front of the train wreck that was coming, when we realized that the Wild West was unsustainable, and we needed some regulatory updates. Now we're on the back end of that, and we're working to look at what the investment environment is looking like again. So right now, my team and I are working with the geography department at the University of Lethbridge, because we're trying to map all of the prime investment zones in Southern Alberta, within the new regulations, so including, you know, the new exclusions that have been put in place by the government, excluding that high-quality agricultural farmland, so that we can balance the economic opportunity with the needs of our stakeholders, so that we can respect rural Southern Alberta and the agricultural economy, while still accommodating new investment here in the South. The Southern Alberta Tourism Collaboration, so right now, Southgrove's trying to fill a gap. There is no destination management organization really for the bulk of Southgrove. You folks are lucky to have Alberta Southwest at the table, but most of our communities don't. So we partner with Tourism Lethbridge, sending a little bit of money down the line there to them, and working with them in order to get regional project included in the various different tourist routes that they're developing in Southern Alberta. And you have the advantage of being on the Highway 2 corridor, so there's an awful lot of stops seen around Claresthome and up and down the Highway 2 corridor, that are being profiled by Tourism Lethbridge, on behalf of the region, because of the partnership that we've built, and the work that my team has done trying to get those locations profiled on the global stage through them. Another thing that your community's taking advantage, this year, because we've got increased staff capacity, we're really pushing the fact that we can be a grant advice hotline for your community. Your staff in the town, or the nonprofit community associations who don't have expertise, who are trying to get their project funded, push them our way. We're really good at this. We work with grants every single day, we're very inventive at trying to stack them. So if you're, somebody you know in the community is working on a project, and they just need some expert advice to get traction on a grant to get their project funded, send them our way, we can help. We've been given those orders by the board to help out our communities and their nonprofits and associations. And in the interest of time, I'll skip ahead, I can answer questions on any of the other projects you see on there as well. This year's challenge is really two things, provincial government relations. It's no secret that the current Minister of Jobs, Economy and Trade, Matt Jones, has, he's a Calgary guy, and we have not been able to get through to him the value of the partnerships that we have in rural Alberta. And he's announced a three-year timeframe for the government of Alberta pulling out of the partnership that they started with you. The initial intention of the retas from somebody back in the day, in the early 2000s, who was a visionary, was to leverage their tax dollars that they had to get the municipalities to kick in on priorities that they had in common. And they created our associations that then go out and get federal funding as well, and business investment, and leverage everybody's tax dollars to create a more efficient process. So when you, if you're at AB Munis or RMA over the next month, and you're in those conversations, make sure, if these kind of partnerships are important to you, bring them up, and talk to them about it, and I just don't feel like rural Alberta's getting the respect that we deserve currently. And of course, regional act dev capacity, I am proud to say that you guys are one of two communities have full-time economic development officer. Before the pandemic, we had six in the region, six full-time community economic development officers. The capacity has dropped, and from talking to all of the regional communities, everybody has a mandate to do economic development, but few communities actually have the capacity to do it. So look for things coming forward through your board rep, that we're trying to find a way that we can provide more community economic development supports, and move in that direction as an organization, because the need is clearly there, and more and more of our communities are saying that that's what they really need. Having the regional act dev component is nice, but if you're not able to get any traction in your own community economic development, maybe that's something that we can step into and find a way to fill that role as well. Opportunities for Claresthome, you have the advantage of having some folks up there who are really, really engaged. I mean, geography is definitely in your favor. Claresthome has become a natural service center for a very wide geographical region, that's why you have all those Alberta health services facilities clustered there. This is something you can lean into, particularly as the government looks to tighten purse strings and find efficiencies in their funding models, by centralizing services. As long as we can keep them from being centralized too tightly, so that everything in your town goes to Lethbridge, and keep them more regionally distributed, then Claresthome has natural advantages that you can lean into. You're also a great stopping point as a regional tourism waypoint. If we can work together in order to increase tourism opportunities in the South, and pull more of those 1.5 million people up around Calgary, down to Southern Alberta, as the mountains get full, and as Travel Alberta works to develop more product down south here, you will have natural advantages there. You're a stopover. You're a place that can develop your own tourism product, to capture some of that visitation, that day-tripping out from Calgary as well. And this is a really good opportunity that could be leaned into. Of course, light industrial expansion in the South, always a huge success. I don't have to say this to you, I know you guys know the value of that, because you've leaned into it and seized it. And I'm excited to see what comes of your new industrial expansion on the east side as you push that forward. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the value of community energy management and solar. I get accused of being a greenie sometimes, but I push this stuff, because it's an extremely easy way in the current environment for you to reduce your budgetary constraints. And I know the solar is expensive, but there is another grant available right now. The FCM is funding community solar deployments again, and I didn't think that the grant would come back. You know, it's not as good as they used to be, this is still the majority of a low-interest loan plus 15% grant in order to offset the, offset the interest costs. But the long-term price environment for energy in Alberta, it's not going to be rock bottom, it's not going to be as high as it used to be. There is a payback period that makes sense, and you end up saving an awful lot of money off your bottom line as a community, that you can put back into other things, and show good stewardship of taxpayer funds, too. And of course, there's really, really good grants available, particularly through the Municipal Climate Change Action Centre right now, to lean into energy efficiency projects, which once again, lower your costs and save dollars, and the matching on them is pretty Regional challenges, these are things that you're fairly aware of as well. It's, I thought, like many of you, that we'd have a government that really, really took care of rural. I hope we can get that back in this current administration. Long-term water sustainability for Southern Alberta, this is something that needs to be our long-term, multi-decade plans for all of our communities. Right now, we're okay, but the long-term future of Southern Alberta, as the population continues to grow, we need to continue to work together as communities in Southern Alberta, to ensure that we get more storage, to ensure that we're making more efficient use of our water resources down here, so we can keep the good thing that we have going. And that's going to be one of those high-level leadership things that comes from our councils to drive forward the ball on that. And then waste disposal, it's a pain point for all of our communities, and technology is changing really, really fast. There's opportunities and there's threats here. We don't know quite what's going to happen with SEWA, I don't know if you folks are in on that particular initiative or not, but it's an inflection point, things are changing. And there's a lot of new technology surging onto the scene, and there's new options, but new options are also risky, and it's a thing that has to be navigated carefully. And then, of course, the pain point that everybody has, that I know you guys are working hard on, is labor force attraction, and the provision of housing, so that we can keep people in our communities. I'm happy to answer questions on anything I've talked about, or anything that you saw in the presentation that you'd like to ask questions about. Thanks for your time.
I would like to express our gratitude for Southgrove stepping up with their grants, help. I know our staff have called in several times, and I just appreciate what Southgrove does for Claresthome. I wish we could do more, but we keep working at it. Thank you, Peter. Okay, action items. Delegation response, Abe?
So Claresthome Minor Hockey had a delegation to council at the last council meeting, and requested that council review the 10% increase that is scheduled to happen, according to our fees policy, and just explain that it was financially, a big financial hit. We had raised, or council had approved raises to the fee schedule, 10% for 2023, 24, and another 10% 2024, 25. And the 2024, 25 increase is what they were requesting council have another look at. So administration has shared the, some of the information that council used previously when they adjusted the fees, with comparisons to other municipalities. At the time, administration recommended that comparatively, the fees were quite low, and that raising the fees would offset some of the operational costs borne by taxpayers, and put it more on to the facility users. And so that was the, that's the background of that decision. And so we have prepared some information for you, along with some options for council's consideration in light of the request. Option A being no changes, which would mean that there would be another 10% fee increase to the minor hockey fees, ice time, rather, this year, so it will go from $78 per hour to $85, 80. Option B, which was the delegation request, was to halt that, halt that increase altogether, so just maintain the fees from the previous year at $78 an hour. And then option C, which is to still have the 10% increase, but spread it out over two years. So 2024, 25, increase of 5% for $81, 90 per hour of ice time, and 2025, another 5%, bring it up to the 86, plus GST.
Questions? Counselor Kettles?
I'd thank the delegation for coming last time, I appreciate they're in a bit of a difficult spot this time of year, always looking for hockey players and numbers, and trying to work it all out. And, and I also have to agree a little bit in that when you look at 20% over two years, it, it seems like a big-ish number, right, you know, in that light, so. I guess I would speak in favor of, I think it was C, where we split the, the increase over 2024 and 2025. I know it probably ties our hands a bit for the next budget year, but I'm not sure we'd necessarily hit them with another 10% there in any way, so. Anyway, that's kind of where I'm, I'm coming down on it, kind of split between 5%, and 5% over two years.
I agree with Counselor Kettles, I think we could pick option C, and spread it out over two years instead of 10% in one year. Any other comments?
I'll agree with C. I think C, I like C.
Counselor Carlson?
The only thing that I would caution on is, it seems like a large number, because we weren't keeping up with inflation to begin with. So 20% over two years, instead of the 20% that should have been over the last eight, puts us into a position where, where we are behind the eight ball again. When you look at the comparisons, the comparisons are all very well in line. And yes, I, I can say that we're, what are we, we're up $7.80 year-over-year for an hour of time. If that's split up between 20 players on a practice, that's not a crazy amount of dollars. So that would be my caution, is continuing to spread it over, and then having to make another jump that feels painful again.
Counselor Kettler?
I, I share some of the same concerns as Counselor Carlson. I understand that 10% and 10% is a lot, but I mean, we don't, we don't go to our suppliers and ask for a discount on our chemicals and our products that we have to keep the arena going. All this stuff, cost is going up, cost of staffing is going up, cost of maintenance repairs going up, the ones who are using the building are the ones who should be paying for the budget of that building. I'm a strong, firm believer of a user-fee process, where people who are using the process and not people who aren't. I mean, the taxpayers are still paying their portion for the arena to have the amenity there. And again, we haven't had increases in yet, 10% over every year for two years, but again, like Counselor Carlson said, $8 an hour between a team, I just, I just can't see if we keep stopping and keep spreading it out, it's just, we're getting further behind.
Counselors Emmert? Councilor Zimmer?
I was going to agree with Councilor Carlson as well, and Councilor Cutler pretty much well. Said what I was going to say. We got to quit chasing that eight ball, so to say, and get, maybe not ahead of it, but at least get caught up to it.
Anybody else? Councilor Carlson?
No, I was just going to say, I think we have that motion already out, right? You were willing to make that motion?
Question?
Moved by Councilor Kettles to adopt option C for the recreation fees policy 5.7.10, amendment to youth primetime ice user fees as presented.
All in favor? Opposed? Opposed, takes it. Councilor Cutler?
Can I just make one comment there? When it says, when we read out the motion, right, it reads to cut the 10% off the youth primetime ice user fees, but there was an increase across all user fees, right? And they were just asking for the one fee to be decreased? That's why it was listed like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next, provincial government of correspondence, Alberta Health Advisory Council's Secretariat. Abe?
So Alberta Health is looking for municipal advisors on regional advisory councils. And so they have asked administrators to share this request or this search with their councils. Basically, they're looking for community advocates, people who are connected with the community and understand the needs of the community. And that's why they're sending it forward. As councillors, you do have access to a lot of town priorities and local needs through your work on council. And so that's why it's come to you. They have four to six meetings, virtual meetings a year, it looks like. That would be the commitment. In addition to reviewing, obviously reviewing agendas and whatnot.
Anybody want to volunteer? Councilor Carlson?
I'd be willing to volunteer for that.
Perfect.
We'll work with you. They're looking for an actual resume or a write-up of who you are, so we'll work with you to get that. Sure. Got a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to nominate Councilor Carlson for this advisory committee.
Question?
Moved by Councilor Cutler to submit the name of Councilor Carlson to be a municipal representative on the Alberta Health Advisory Council's Secretariat.
All in favor?
You have to hold.
Approved. Okay, other government correspondence, Alberta municipalities. Abe?
So this is a correspondent from Alberta municipalities. Looks like they're returning officer for the upcoming board elections and the vacancies and the acclamations. Just really for your information, council, that, obviously that these votes will be happening this week at the conference.
Thank you. Alberta municipalities. Abe?
So another group seeking for a board representative. This one is for the municipalities that participate in the local authorities pension plan. They are seeking for an advisory member on their LAPP sponsor board.
Anyone interested?
We will share it internally and see if anybody would like to, would like to do that.
Perfect. Moving on, local correspondence, Special Olympics, Alberta. Abe?
Correspondents from the Special Olympics. I guess their advisory board, they are holding the Special Olympics in 2027. And just information for communities that are interested in hosting the Special Olympics. Information on the activities, five-pin bowling, alpine skiing, curling, cross-country ski, figure skating, floorball, speed skating, and snowshoeing. Looks like we received the correspondence, or council has received the correspondence because someone expressed, someone from the community expressed interest or thought the community would be a good fit. I don't exactly know who, haven't heard. This just came our way, and so we're sharing it with you.
Councilor Cutler?
As I was reading the report, like you said, the eight main official sports, Special Olympic sports, we can only host two of them. Right, so I just, and I don't know if even if any of the surrounding areas would have a speed skating or a, I don't think, I don't think a dancing before McCloud have five-pin bowling either. Right, so I just, it's a good, but I just don't think we have the amenities to host it.
Moving on, fifth annual Claris Home Haunted House. Abe?
So the Haunted House is preparing for another year, and previously, they have asked for council's help with covering some of the costs of the rental of the facility to host the Haunted House. They are doing it from the 25th to the 27th this year. And it looks like they'll be having the Haunted House open, I believe, on Saturday and Sunday, yes?
Yes.
And they are looking for assistance with, yeah, as I said, assistance with rental of the facility. They've asked for 660. That was last year's costs. This year, I think the cost would be somewhere around $750 for those two days. If council was to approve that, or if it was a portion, it could be a different number.
Councilor Cutler?
It's a well, it's a well-attended program. I think it's been one of our community volunteers' success stories around getting out there and making things possible for people. And I think the town of Claris Home supporting it goes a long way. So I would be willing to make the motion to sponsor the hall rental.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a couple of comments. Each year, it involves about 60 volunteers to pull it off, decorating, tear-down, scarers, candy bag makers. It raises over $1,000 for the community. It's supported the food bank and the skate park. This year, they've decided to support the soup bowl. But again, yeah, any support from the town is greatly appreciated for this event.
Question?
Moved by Councilor Cutler to support the fifth annual Halloween Haunted House to be held at the Claris Home Community Centre the weekend of October 25th, 2024, with a donation of $750 to cover the cost of renting the space.
All in favor? Opposed? In favor? Okay. Kelly Slade, traffic lights at Highway 520 and Highway 2. Abe?
So we have, council has a request from local concerned citizen about the traffic at the intersection of Highway 2 and 520, pointing to the, well, existing concern of traffic in that area, but now with McDonald's, an increased concern of traffic and pedestrian safety. And so this person is looking to advocate for some traffic control at that intersection. And so they're requesting council's support. Advocacy.
Is that in a form of letter to our MLA or?
Yeah, presumably to the MLA and
Response to Kelly?
Alberta Transportation as well. There have been requests like this in the past, and council has done some advocacy in this area in the past. We could, administratively, we could bring back some background on that. If you'd like, if council would like, or you can decide to direct administration to draft a letter tonight, if you'd like.
Comments? Questions? Councilor Meister?
I'm not sure exactly the traffic issues that we have at that corner. I know there's been a couple accidents, but I don't foresee installing lights there would improve the situation. I think it would make people more antsy and going up the shoulder to get into McDonald's. I just don't see it helping the issue, but I see it making it worse.
Councilor Cutler?
We've heard this throughout the last couple of months with McDonald's coming. We've heard about this intersection over and over. Again, I agree, it's a high-traffic area. If there's something that's going to help it, but from my understanding, Alberta Transportation has kind of made their decision. But I support any local community member who wants to go down a path and try to seek answers. I think if they're willing to take the time and energy to go down that path, the worst thing that Alberta Transportation can say is no. But I would support anybody who wants to try and make a petition or make a change in that area. But again, we've been told by Alberta Transportation what their guidelines are, but even though we tell people what we get, but maybe if they hear it for themselves and they go down that pathway themselves, they can get an answer.
Comments? Councilor Kettles?
My only comment would be, you know, it's been open a week. I think we maybe, it would be worthwhile taking some time to see, you know, whether the real issues are what the perceived issues are going to be. Not that in delay, and I kind of agree with Councilor Cutler. I mean, let's, let's support anybody willing to, you know, put themselves out there, I guess. I just, it just seems a little bit early in the game for me.
Councilor Carlson?
Again, I support any concerns with traffic safety in that area. Writing a letter of support for a stoplight at that intersection is also one step short of saying it's probably worth looking at the ring road around our town instead of having to worry about the traffic through our town. And I think you can talk to everybody on that business corridor and downtown, the people that are employed by those businesses that would have a serious challenge with anything that deters traffic through the community. And I've stopped at that late, or stopped at that intersection many times, seen some less-than-wise actions at that. I've also been through communities like Tabor that have multiple lights and seen people do less-than-wise things to continue through those lights before they turn yellow and cause more challenges. So that would be my caution on this.
Anything, councillor?
Well, I think it might set some people's minds at ease with the care center. There was some current concerns about people walking across there at that time, so maybe I support a letter for this.
Councilor Zimmer?
Same thing, I mean, the same thing. If somebody wants to chase that down, like Councilor Cutler said. I'm all for supporting them. Again, like we was told, it is what it is. We heard the same things when the North End 7-Eleven opened up, how that was just going to be a big wreck too. But like Councilor Kettle says, we're, we're early in the game. Not so much the intersection, I think it's more the drivers.
Abe?
Yeah, just going to add that our development department did meet with Alberta Transportation extensively on this. And there have been traffic studies on this issue. And so my recommendation would be that administration can prepare a response so council can be informed on some of the information on those traffic studies and the implications of putting a light in there. Because as Councilor Meister pointed out, there are concerns, the traffic signage, signals, lights, rather, can cause other concerns or have other consequences that can be safety issues in and of themselves. And so I would, I would recommend that administration brings a report back with some information before council makes a decision.
Perfect. Thank you.
Got a motion for that, please?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Meister? Question?
Moved by Councilor Meister to refer to administration to do more research regarding the possibility of a traffic light being installed at the intersections of Highway 2 and 520.
All in favor? Approved. Next, ATCO franchise agreement renewal. Abe?
So administration is looking for a motion from council to exercise an option to reapprove the agreement that we currently hold with ATCO and the franchise agreement that we have to allow ATCO to have, provide gas and pipeline services in the town. Recent changes to the Government of Alberta Utilities Affordability Statues Amendment Act require that all such agreements be reapproved prior. And if they're not reviewed and reapproved by March 17th, 2025, they're actually canceled. And so there is a reapproval process. And we are required to get a motion from council to start that process. And then, just like when we do the franchise fee increases, we have to have some notification processes in the local newspapers to inform residents what's happening. We would have to go through that process. So looking for a motion to do that.
A motion to renew the agreement with ATCO franchise fee.
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Councilor Zimmer that the town of Claris Home exercised the ATCO franchise agreement reapproval process.
All in favor? Approved. ATCO franchise fee. Abe?
So every kind of September, usually it's right in September, early October, ATCO and Fortis utility providers in town come to the council and ask council to review the franchise fees. Franchise fees are basically the rental that ATCO pays to have their infrastructure in, on town property, in the town right away. And ATCO, the town charges that to ATCO, ATCO in turn charges that out to the residents and the utility ratepayers. So Claris Home's rate is currently at 12%. We do have comparisons for council's information below. The town of Claris Home is lower than the majority of communities, out of 65 communities on the list. There are four that are lower than Claris Home, Hillspring at 5%, Granum at zero, Nobleford at 7.5, and Standard at 5%. Vauxhall has the same franchise fee as Claris Home. The other 60 are higher than the 12%. Average for the 65 communities, 18.55%. Communities we generally compare ourselves to for tax rates are those that are in close proximity to us. So that would be Fort McLeod, their franchise fee is 12 and a half, Nantons is 19, High River 20, Staveley 11, as we said, Granum is zero, Vulcan's 35, Raymond is 15, and Cartston is 20%. Based on our current rate, Atco projects for 2025, the revenue will be 157,000. Revenues in 2024 are projected to be 150,000. And so if the rate doesn't change, the projection is about a $6,700 increase. That's if council maintains the same percentage of 12% for the franchise fee. If council chose to increase the franchise fee rate to 13%, this would result in an estimated revenues of 170,800 and an annual increase to the average resident residential customer of $5.66. Council raised the rate to 14%, revenues would be 183,200 or $11.32 for the average residential customer. Some information there on the previous motions that council has made on the franchise fees. Council maintained the fee at 10% in 2021, 10% again in 2022. And then last year, council increased the franchise fee from 10% to 12%.
Discussion? Counselor Cutler?
So I read that right, an annual increase of the average residential customer will be $5.66 a year, so 50 cents a bill?
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Or $1 a bill if we go up to 14%? I mean, we just had a discussion about raising interest and making the users pay their. I mean, it's one of the ways that we're able to utilize that process and, I mean, we're well below average. We're, I don't see any harm in raising it to 14%.
Counselor Carlson?
There was a wise person that pointed out this the other day, that you've got facilities such as schools, hospitals, churches, that you do not get any taxation from other than these fees. This levels the playing field a little bit in order to make that happen. And I would feel more than comfortable at 14%.
Thank you. Any other comments? Could I get a motion? Counselor Cutler?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to approve a rate change in the Atco franchise fee from 12 to 14% for 2025.
All in favor? Approved. Next. Fortis electricity franchise fee. Abe?
So I guess a similar conversation to the last item. Council, Fortis is the electricity provider distributor in Claris Home. Similar to Atco, they also have franchise fees, which again is the rent that they pay to have their infrastructure in our town. Claris Home's franchise fee with Fortis is currently 6%. And again, the town of Claris Home is below average. Out of 165 communities, the average is 9.49%. Some more comparisons in there with the communities regionally for your information. Based on our current rate, Fortis' projection for 2025 revenue is estimated that revenue from the franchise fees will be 211,892. And this is a projected increase from 2024 of approximately 13,000. Again, that's if council does not increase the franchise fee. If council chose to increase the franchise fee from 6 to 7%, it would result in additional 49,000 in revenues, helping to reduce the burden on property taxes and more fairly distribute the burden of municipal revenues to all properties, institutions, churches, et cetera. A 1% increase in the franchise fee is estimated to have an $11.81 annual impact on residential customers.
Discussion, questions? Motion?
It's our L motion that we take it from 6 to 7.
Discussion, questions? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to approve a rate change in the Fortis franchise fee from 6 to 7% for 2025.
All in favor? Approved. Western Fine Meats Expansion Letter of Support. Abe?
So we did have a council had a conversation about this letter of support at the last council meeting. There were some questions about the nature of the operations and some concerns about waste and waste disposal. They are planning an expansion and they are planning to apply to a federal program. It's escaping at the moment, apologize, it's probably in the motion. The Federal Supply Management Investment Fund. And they're looking for funding to expand their operations. And just a note to council that they have received their federal approvals for the proposed project. And the process, the change in use was approved for a food processing facility by the Municipal Planning Commission last year. So all development approvals and drawings are in place for the expansion.
Discussion, questions, concerns?
With the haziness of a year and a half ago, being clarified, I'm more than willing to write a letter of support.
Do we need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to provide a letter of support for Western Fine Meats to the Supply Management Investment Fund for their Claris Home expansion project.
All in favor? Approved. General Contractor Services. Abe?
In 2021, the town of Claris Home entered into a two-year enforcement general contract, general contract for enforcement services agreement with an option to extend for one year. That extension was exercised in 2023, and so we've been in the process of renewing that contract. That is to assist the town with bylaw enforcement cleanup matters such as cleaning sidewalks, snow removal, for example, when that's not done, the town actually calls a contractor in and has them do that work. Same thing for unsightly properties, backyards, cleanups, et cetera. That contractor does that kind of work for the town. And so that, that agreement has come to a close. The town did advertise that we were looking for a new agreement. And we got a proposal back from the existing or the outgoing contractor. That was the only, the only proposal that we had. The town is happy with their services. They've been good, responsive, and do good work for us. And so we're recommending that council approve the town to enter into a, into a contract with them for another two years. Again, with the option to extend the term of the agreement for an additional year.
Questions, concerns? Comments? Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to accept the proposal from mowers and blowers to become the town of Claris Home general contractor for the term of two years with the option of the town of Claris Home to extend the term of the agreement for an additional year.
All in favor? Approved. Next, letter of support for the MD of Willow Creek Fire Services Training Grant. Abe?
So we talked about this last week, council, that the MD oversees, pulled up the wrong one there. The MD oversees the training initiatives, the fire, fire department training initiatives for the town. That's part of the regional agreement that we have with them. And so we are looking to do some more training this year. And the funds would be used to offset training for the 1,001 professional firefighter, 1021 company officer, and 1041 fire service instructor. And so we're looking for a letter of support. Letter of support for that grant application, provincial grant.
I'll just jump in here for a minute. Any discussion, any concerns around a letter of support for that? Could we have a motion to that effect? Motion from Counselor?
Moved by Counselor Ross to write a letter of support towards the municipal district of Willow Creek in their application for the 2025 Fire Services Training Program Grant.
Any further discussions? All in favor? Karen?
Junior A Thunders Hockey Liquor Alcohol Sales. Abe?
So the new junior A team is looking to have alcohol liquor sales during their season, throughout their season. The town's policy is to not have liquor sales at the arena, but rather upon council approval that they can sell and, groups can sell and have liquor sales at the arena. So we're looking for approval to do that, provided that the league comply with the town's policies and Alberta Gaming Liquor and Cannabis Commission's guidelines and regulations for alcohol liquor sales as well.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Cutler?
To Revenue Avenue, I think it'd be a good opportunity. I don't see any problems with it.
Comments, questions?
I've partaken, I've partaken in a few other games in other arenas where they didn't have alcohol before. And they do now, and it was actually, I thought it'd be a bit of a write-off, wasn't. It's all, it's all pretty good and decent and composed very well.
Motion please, Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to authorize the National Junior Hockey League/Western Provinces Hockey Academy to serve liquor and alcohol within the town's arena and mezzanine for scheduled Junior A Thunders Games and events in the 2024-2025 season. And that this authorization is based upon league compliance with Policy 5.8.15, the liquor and town facilities policy and compliance with the Alberta Gaming Liquor and Cannabis Commission.
All in favor? Pose? Approved. Next. Letter of support for the Kinsmen for Moffett Park. Abe?
So the town has been in talks with the Kinsmen on some improvements at the Ball Diamonds at Moffett Park. And the Kinsmen have reviewed the opportunity to work with the town and submit a grant application for some work. Sorry, at a bit of roof replacement at Millennial Ballpark, so not just at Moffett Park. But roof replacement, which badly in need of replacement, Moffett Park fencing, backstop and dugout upgrades. And turf face, which is a shale replacement product as well. And so the roof estimated cost will be 10,000. The Moffett Park work will be 50,000 estimated. And the turf face is estimated to be 35,000. The shale was last replaced in 2016 at Millennium, but the product wasn't of good quality. And so as shale breaks down into dust. So hoping that the turf face will give us a bit more life out of the infield surface, running surfaces there at the parks. So total project cost will be 96,000. And we do have that, council has, does have that tentatively or has at least discussed in capital plans, the potential to have that project in the 2025 capital budget. And so 46 of that 96 would be from the CFPB grant.
Questions, concerns, Counselor Kettles?
I'd like to speak in favor of putting some money towards this. I had an opportunity to speak to the outgoing president of minor ball this weekend. And he told me, I believe they had 160 registrants for minor ball this year, which is, you know, even up from, from what their estimates were earlier. So I think it's a well-supported program right now in town. And I think we should do everything to help keep those facilities viable.
Comments, questions? Motion? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to have the town of Claris Home write a letter of support for the Ball Diamond Revitalization Project for the Kinsmen CFPB application.
All in favor? Approved. Next, CAO Report. Abe?
Yeah, council, just a report on operations from various departments and staff members with the town. Any questions or comments on anything?
No, just my comment is these pictures of the park. It really is a pleasure to walk through there at nighttime, like it's so great compared to what it was. Like, it's so great compared to what it was. I, I love it.
Beautiful park.
Thank you, Abe. Council Committee Report. Abe?
Counsel's report on some of the committees that they've, um, been involved with over the last month, to maybe, maybe even two months. No, just last month, I guess, eh?
Concerns? Additions? Comments? Next, Council Resolution Status. Abe?
Yeah. Just updates on past resolutions from council.
Any questions on, okay, moving on, any questions on information items? Could I have a motion to accept the information items?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to go in camera. Counselor Cutler? All in favor? Camera off. Okay, we have two motions.
No, motion to come out of in camera.
Pardon?
Motion to come out of in camera.
Motion to come on in camera. Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to come out of in camera at 8:20 PM.
All in favor? Approved. Two motions to come out of in camera to...
I would like to motion to reappoint Kelsey Hipkin to the Claris Home Library Board.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to reappoint Kelsey Hipkin to the Claris Home Library Board.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Cutler?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer Cooper to the Library Board.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to appoint Jennifer Cooper to the Claris Home Library Board.
All in favor? Approved. Counsel, boo. Motion to adjourn by Counselor Carlson. Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson that the meeting adjourned at 8:21 PM.
All in favor? Approved. We adjourned. Camera off.